This conference will now be recorded.
John, I see a quorum and it's 7:30.
I just counted the quorum. All right, at 7:30, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Borough of Edgewood for April 19th, 2021.
Everybody please mute themselves who isn't speaking at the time, get a little bit of feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Horchak, please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mrs. Gleba.
Here.
Mr. Love.
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Present.
Dr. Petrola. Ms. Yanni.
Here.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Here. We'll skip ahead to Pledge of Allegiance. Items from the floor, Mr. Horchak, do we have any written items?
I did not receive, I did not receive any submitted public comment for tonight. Mr. President, could I also ask to see as the mayor on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there anyone attending the meeting who would like to speak? Items from the floor. Hearing nobody, all right. Apparently, Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation tonight?
Yes, we do. Are you ready for it?
We are.
Alrighty, Borough of Edgewood, Proclamation 2021-03. Whereas Owen L. Lewis of Edgewood passed away at the age of 92 on February 24th, 2021, and whereas Mr. Lewis graduated from the Wilkinsburg High School in 1945, attended the University of Pittsburgh in 1950, and served the United States Air Force from 1951 to 1959, attending the rank of Staff Sergeant, and whereas Mr. Lewis had successfully, a successful 30-year career in the interior design and construction field, and was a 33rd degree mason. And whereas Mr. Lewis was a member of the, Officer of the Edgewood Youth Activities Association, coaching boys and girls basketball, baseball, and softball, and helped to found the Edgewood Community Day. And whereas Mr. Lewis was the Secretary of the Board of Trustees of the Edgewood Community Club, and representative of the Eastern Swim Association of the C.C. Miller Library. Now therefore, on this 19th day of April 2021, the Office of Mayor of the Borough of Edgewood, in partnership with Borough Council, honors the life and service of Owens L. Lewis Jr. and his numerous personal and professional accomplishments, and proclaims Friday, April 23rd, 2021, as Owen Lewis Day, proclaimed at the meeting of Council of the Borough of Edgewood, the 19th day of April, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not saying that Mr. Lewis was around for a long time, but I had him as a coach in middle league.
He coached me too.
All right, Mrs. Horchak, I guess we have an engineer presentation.
Yeah, we do. On the, I'd say, yeah, joining us tonight virtually, we have both Jake and Drew from Lennon Smith Solar Engineering. They are here this evening to talk to you all about the Borough's approach to sewer regionalization. This is, I'm going to try to sum it up, this is the culmination of a lot of work on Lennon Smith's part to take what was a very generic level approach by Alka-Sand, and that's not, that's not, you know, a discount to Alka-Sand, but they, based on the regionalization criteria, selected a number of sewer lines in Edgewood Borough that met that criteria, and then applied basically a cost formula to remediating all of the defects that exist in those pipes. Lennon Smith took it upon themselves at my instruction to really kind of truth-say a lot of those repairs, because some of the repairs might be a little more costly, and some of them might be a little less expensive based on their specific location within the Borough. These gentlemen are going to present to you a couple of scenarios that we've played out in how the regionalization effort could take place with some negotiating back and forth between the powers that be and Alka-Sand. This is basically meant as, you know, a first glance educational presentation to you all with also seeking some recommendations on how you'd like us all to move forward. But if you have any questions whatsoever, please, you know, stop and ask them along the way. I've seen this presentation, it's very deep in its information. It's a lot of stuff, and I think you'll find it very informative. So let me go ahead and tell Jake and Drew to unmute themselves. And I think, Jake, it looks like maybe you're driving?
Yeah, yeah, you can make me presenter.
Okay.
Jake will do the most of the talking, but good evening to everybody. And Rob, thanks for the introduction.
Okay, Jake, you should be presenter now.
Rob, were you able to provide them even those blurry slides that I?
No, you know what, I decided against passing them out because they were really difficult to read. So I figured, once we got them tuned up after this presentation, I would pass them out. Because when you zoomed into the granular level, you really couldn't read any of the boxes that were on the charts.
No.
We never can read any of their stuff. It's too damn small.
We'll give you bigger sheets of paper, I'm sorry. And if anybody wants to know how to make their, how to make what's actually on your screen a little bit bigger, if on this platform, if you look, if you're on a laptop, I don't know, and people are probably using a tablet, but if you change your view, if you selected the top, there's an option that shows your view. You can actually select hide everyone, and that will maximize the size of screen space that's available to you so you can see their presentation. And that's actually what I'm going to do right now, because it'll turn off a little thumbnail bar at the top that shows everybody's faces. Sorry, I'll be quiet now. Go ahead, Jake.
I know, you're fine. So as Rob mentioned, the topic here is Alka-Sand regionalization. What I'm going to show you, and then what we'll eventually will provide to you is, it's basically screenshots of our figures and maps of this area. The Nine Mile Run Sewer Shed is a very large area, very complex, multi-municipal point of connection to the Alka-Sand Sewer Shed. So can you guys all see my screen? I take it we're good there?
Yes, you're good, Jake.
What you're seeing here in purple, this is the entire Nine Mile Run Sewer Shed. I highlighted Edgewood's border in blue here, so you can see where you sit as far as that sewer shed goes. And the Alka-Sand regionalization sewers, as Rob had mentioned, the criteria was multi-municipal trunk sewers or interceptors that are 10-inch or greater in diameter. Those sewers are highlighted on this map in yellow. And this just kind of gives you an outline of the major trunk sewers throughout Nine Mile Run. And I will zoom into this, and we will be getting, you know, closer in focusing on Edgewood and how it all flows together. I wanted to give you a broad overview first. So down here is the point of connection. There's a single large trunk sewer up to this point, this is PWSA-owned.
I guess, Jake, let me point out too, for those of you who are vaguely familiar with the events that occurred, I think it was two summers ago. The section, so there's the M47 connection, which is down along Commercial Street, which is right before the Squirrel Hole Tunnel, just to sort of orient yourself. And yeah, down in there. And the Nine Mile Run break that we experienced, Jake, are you able to show with your cursor where that break in Nine Mile Run occurred? That was like, yeah, right about there. So that's just so you orient yourself, you could see the parkway moving, or, you know, the parkway called out there. So we basically go all the way down to Commercial Street. Sorry, Jake, continue.
I know, to jump in at any time with any questions, anything like that, I appreciate it. Here's a PWSA trunk sewer going up, this is all the city right here. From this point, there's parallel interceptors coming upstream here. You know, one goes through Edgewood to Braddock Hills, Swissville. The other goes up through Edgewood into Wilkinsburg, and then continues all the way upstream up into here, even into Churchill. Some points, I guess, to remember as we're going through this. Where Rob had mentioned, our point of connection, this is Manhole 8 area down here by Commercial Street. From here to about here, this section in here is a portion of our interceptor that we could potentially lop off and connect directly into PWSA's interceptor a little bit early. Meaning any defects in this section, we could potentially remove from the scope. So when we give you our alternatives, which we have three, we'll give you a cost for with and without that section. Moving further on up, this Caney Field area is where we have an overflow from Wilkinsburg. It's all Wilkinsburg flow coming down to this point, and, you know, under extreme precip events, it's shooting out of the manhole top. And I guess the other thing to mention would be along this lower interceptor here, which goes to Braddock Hills and Swissville, our scope of work is generally stopping right here. There's a manhole 2012G that we're not considering anything upstream of that because Braddock Hills is taking care of that section.
If there was anything else I wanted to mention on this one?
So, yeah, we, I mentioned Wilkinsburg, Churchill, Swissville, Braddock Hills, PWSA. So this, the yellow sewers are the regionalization sewers. The red marks that you see along here are all the areas Alka-Sand determined. Either there's a defect that needs repair, or there's some kind of action that needs taken, whether it's, you know, clean the sewer, clean out the roots, cut a tap, things like that. And the last correspondence we had when they were sending this out to us was February 2019. So at that time, we were under the impression that regionalization of these sewers was mandatory. This was a requirement with Alka-Sand and the municipality that these had to be repaired and transferred. That was up till March 2020, when the wet weather plan was submitted to the Department of Justice. And at that point, it became a voluntary thing. So it's up to the municipality if they actually want to regionalize. As we're going down through here, and you see that it's a unique interceptor, it's difficult, it's running along the streams, the culverts, the parkway. And there's a lot of tricky repairs. But also repairs that we don't want to have to deal with in the future. So I'm just gonna let you guys know, we have three different alternatives we're looking at, and I'm going to buzz through them real fast, just to let you know. So here's that manhole 8 we were talking about, down by Commercial Street and the parkway. Here's the manhole 14 area. And then here's our two interceptors going up through Edgewood to that manhole 2012G. So this is our scope moving forward. We're not concerned with the rest of Nine Mile Run, we just got to worry about this section here. And then basically our three alternatives, just build, you know, based on different scopes of work we could go with. So back to alternative one here, this is our base alternative. This is what work is required, what's the minimum amount of work required for us to transfer these sewers to Alka-Sand? Alka-Sand did the televising, they told us where all the defects were that we needed to repair. We came through and determined, you know, how are we going to be able to fix something like this? So I will zoom into this alternative. And I'm not going to go through every defect, but I just want to give you a rough idea of some of these repairs. In purple here, anytime you see purple, that's a full liner. We are recommending a liner from manhole to manhole. And I'll zoom in a little bit further here. The sections in blue here, that's a spot liner, that's, there's a small defect. We can get a tiny, small liner in there, and that's going to take care of that defect. The yellow areas are something to pay attention to. These are areas that Alka-Sand attempted to televise and couldn't get through the entire way, whether it's because of roots or a defect, something to that effect. And we, they could not get manhole to manhole. So we would have to come in, cut the roots, finish the televising, and you know, see, are there any other potential things we need to fix? So that's something to keep in mind through these alternatives, is there are still some unknowns in this system that we haven't been able to figure out yet. So moving upstream, and you can see, here's that PWSA interceptor that goes up into Pittsburgh. Here's Wilkinsburg's parallel interceptor weaving in and out of Nine Mile Run. Here, red here, that's a dig repair, we'd actually have to go in and dig that. I believe the defect you guys, the emergency repair you had done was right here, which Alka-Sand marked that as a repair we needed to make, but we already made it, so we can mark that down. As we come further up, just hugging the parkway in there, I mean, whether it's access difficulties, or, you know, being this close to the parkway, there's a lot of tricky situations. So as we get up to this point here, this is where our interceptor split. We're going up towards Caney Field on this end, we need a liner here. This section of sewer luckily is in real good shape. It was already previously lined, and Alka-Sand has no problem with it, and neither do we. Keep moving up, more heavy cleaning, some more televising we need to do. This is a manhole you can see from 376 as you're driving, you can see it on like Google Street View. We would have to dig that manhole up in the shoulder and come about seven feet in, still in the shoulder to make this repair here. Some more dig repair here, that's another, it's going to be deep, it's going to be difficult to get into there. Another heavy cleaning section, and then this is where our scope ends, at this 2012G, where the Braddock Hills and Swissville sewer comes in.
I think the takeaway from the zone in here, for people that aren't familiar with it, is there would be a benefit of regionalizing here. Location, proximity to the parkway, they're not easy to get to favorable straight line sewers.
Yes. From this point, moving upstream, there are more regionalization repairs. But these are being undertaken by Braddock Hills Borough. They received a grant to do some of this work. We are participating with them, there's some additional televising that needs done. So it's kind of nice that we can stop our scope here, and they, they're handling it the rest of the way up. So that's alternative one. And this is the cost, as we see right now, high-level costs. If, if we're doing all the repairs we just went through, about $900,000. If we can lop off that manhole 14 down to manhole 8 that we had mentioned, around $500,000 is what we're thinking. Minimum, you know, and that's, that's with these unknowns. You know, we got to keep that caveat in there, that there's sections of sewer we haven't seen yet.
Yeah, it is important, as Jake pointed out, we haven't seen, we haven't had eyes in most of these sewers in, you know, the better part of probably about 18 months. So, and some of these also were, when they were surveyed, Alka-Sand abandoned the survey because there was a blockage, or there were roots, whatever reason, they couldn't get the camera through the line, so we don't know the condition of the line. So, you know, that is a minimum based on what is known now.
And while we're talking about these unknowns, one of the thoughts we had, as we were going over all this with Rob, was we have a project coming up this year. The school for the deaf area up in this general area here. This is just our next round of sewer O and M repairs. We, the last O and M cycle, we got grow funding for from Alka-Sand. We submitted a letter of interest for this section here as well. We had thoughts that, as an addition to this scope of work, we can add in the televising down here, so that we can take care of these unknowns sooner rather than later. So that's something I also wanted to throw out. And just to give you an idea of that project area, this this is our O and M planning scope, basically. Here's the area we tackled last time around, this is the area we're making repairs in this time around. And, you know, the discussion of Alka-Sand grow funding is what leads us to our next alternatives. Grow funding is, there's a cycle this year, there's going to be a cycle next year. And if we can, you know, even get 25% out of them, you know, it's, in a lot of cases, it's going to be worth it to attempt to get some grow funding for this, because the work we're doing is going to remove flow from the system, and and they're willing to pay for that. So alternative two looks at more of a source flow reduction-based alternative.
Jake, let me interrupt you, this is Tim Berry, the solicitor, before we get to alternative two. Excuse me. I'm sure you've talked to Jason Stanton and maybe even Larry Lennon. But going back 15 years ago, as I understand what you're saying about tying into the PWS line as part of reducing our costs for alternative number one. We tried, I think, as I understand what you're saying, we tried to do that. We had a problem, a major problem, with the Edgewood sewer line that runs through the bed of Nine Mile Run. And we, it ruptured numerous times, we made numerous repairs to it. And the concept 15 years ago was to tie into the PWS line and abandon the Edgewood line. And we were working with PWSA to reach an agreement with them concerning future maintenance costs and this and that and the other thing. But what ultimately stopped that entire project was that the city of Pittsburgh, not PWSA, would not allow us to abandon the Edgewood sewer line in Frick Park. So is that still an issue?
Yes.
That still is, is still an issue, it's still certainly a concern. And I think, as this board's aware, the last repair that you had there, we did reach out to PWSA again to see if they would welcome the conversation. I don't believe there was much change or response in that when Jason did speak with them, try to get their attention. I think a caveat, Jake, to this is, if the PWSA line is also regionalized, it would make it easier to, for Edgewood to tie in.
No, we could tie in, and that was not the problem. The problem was that the city would not allow us to abandon our line.
Without grounding.
Yeah, yeah, the cost to abandon the line became prohibitive because they wanted flowable fill from end to end. And what became, you know, what was like a $15,000 project at the time to tap into the manhole became, you know, a six-figure job that wasn't worth it. And yeah, Tim, we, when this happened again, when this happened two years ago, we went through the same process. And I think, you know, our strategy remains unchanged, even with this project. And, you know, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful, you know, that, like Drew said, that if that PWSA line becomes regionalized, we may be able to tie into it. But you're absolutely right, it still doesn't address the issue of our line being in Frick Park.
Okay, well, my point is to make sure that everyone's aware of that issue, aware of what happened 15 years ago. And we spent five, six, seven years trying to work through that issue, it never happened. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of it, that's all.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tim, that, I mean, that needs to be said, because, you know, obviously, we want to go with the lower-cost alternative. You know, if we can tie in, then that's fine, but it's, there are some complications there. I do think that just this regionalization effort and potential of Alka-Sand being involved with it adds a little bit more pressure to make it happen, but that's another unknown, for sure. And that, this same, you know, abandoning of that line follows through with alternative two and alternative three. So we move forward to alternative two. This alternative is looking at the same defects. But instead of, you know, we have a spot liner here, a dig here, we are proposing to full-line any of those sections that we're making repairs. And full-line any section that hasn't already been lined in the past. So same thing with the colors, purple represents a full liner. This teal color is where those yellow lines were. These are areas we still need to televise, still need to go through and, you know, maybe cut off some roots, things like that. And then they would be able to be full-lined. So you're seeing all those same repairs, but we're full lining any of the regionalization sewers in our scope. Once again, this section here was in good shape, it's already lined, we don't need to line it again. And that goes all the way up to this manhole 2012G. So this alternative does add significant cost. There are, there are certain ways to look at, you know, it depends on what, how Alka-Sand receives this. Alka-Sand is certainly going to be happier about receiving a trunk sewer that's fully lined as opposed to just spot liners here and there. Additionally, you know, if we're down here making these spot repairs, and we already have the access, I think in some ways it makes sense to full-line these sections. So when it does come time to transfer, it makes it much smoother. We don't go to transfer, and they come back to us and say, well, you got to go back in and fix this one area. Another point to be brought up. This is the costs associated with that alternative. So now we're up to 1.5 million for the, for the alternative with, you know, if we can lop off that lower section, up to 2.2 million. Additionally, well, I guess, you know, we had already mentioned the grow funding aspect of this. If we were to go through with this alternative, there is certainly some amount that's going to be funded by grow. At a minimum, I would say 25%. Another point to be made would be, we have Phase 2 consent orders coming up. The requirement, as we understand what it's going to be, at least, is going to be a project that removes 10% of the flow from your system. This kind of project would certainly do that. You know, potentially, we could make an argument that even alternative one is a long way to making that happen. So that's nothing to keep in mind. And even potentially, if we went with alternative one, we could submit that for grow funding, if we can make the argument that we can remove flow from the system. But this, this is more, you know, get Alka-Sand's attention, hey, we're giving you, we're transferring a product that's a tight system. So the next alternative we're going to look at is based on information we received from Alka-Sand. They have been looking at They have been looking at Nine Mile Run from a global perspective, you know, they want, they want to see a multi municipal joint project, joint Alka San grow application. And they want to work with the municipalities to say, hey, we've done all this analysis. We're, we're finding these wet areas. Here's where we recommend you guys add to your scope to help the grow match. You know, because potentially they're, they're matching up to 85% in, in certain cases of some of these projects. Now, I don't want to get your hopes up. That's, that's not going to be the case here, the 85% route. But this is sort of Alka San's goal is to look at it from this perspective. I've been involved with the Streets Run Sewer Shed where that approach made a lot of sense. For Nine Mile Run, the difference there is the fact that there's basically three distinct interceptors that come down. All this area up in Wilkinsburg, you know, that bypasses all our flow. So the whole Wilkinsburg area, all these red areas up in here, that's kind of separate from what we're concerned with here in Edgewood. Now, you know, us with Braddock Hills and Swissville, yeah, I can see that, that this would be that kind of multi municipal effort there. So in 2019, they let out this study. I, I think the flow monitoring might've been done in 17 or 18. But they flow them on at all Nine Mile Run. And they found these orange, yellow and red sheds to be the wettest areas in Nine Mile Run. They went from there and said, okay, we're going to further isolate this flow that, and this is based on groundwater infiltration. These are the areas where groundwater is getting in through the cracks of the pipe, something like that. So they further isolated it to this level. Again, we're, we're only focused down here. These are flow isolation studies done it, you know, during the night. So theoretically, the only flow in the system is groundwater flow at that point, if it's during, done during a dry time. So they, they picked out this area, they further isolated it to find what are the wet areas inside this, this larger wet area. And that brings us to this slide. This, they had sent us information like this earlier this year in preliminary phase or, you know, draft form. This was just released at the end of March, March 31st. This is, here's the interceptor coming up through. You know, and this, here's that manhole 2012 G where we, our scope is ending. And basically they are recommending we add to our scope by lining all these sections of sewer within these red and orange areas. These aren't areas that would be transferred over to Alka San. They're, they're Edgewood Borough Own sewers. But the idea is, all right, if you tack this on to your scope of work, you can potentially get enough growth funding that, that it makes it worth it. And, you know, kind of cancels each other out. You're trading grand dollars for source flow reduction dollars. So this is alternative three. We, we looked at tacking this on to our alternative two. And that's, that's, this is what that looks like. So we're basically adding $500,000 to our alternative two to line more sections of sewer. Now, yes, I want to move down to this table here. So you guys can look at it just, just strictly on cost based. Here's the three alternatives we went over. This is total project cost. Here's the column that represents, sorry, if we were able to lop off that lower section. At a minimum, we're saying 500,000. But in reality, with the unknowns, we're probably somewhere in between these, these two numbers, 500,000 to 1.5. The, the determination on whether we, we go to full alternative two or add on some sewers for alternative three is it's strictly going to be based on a negotiation with Alka San. And you know, what they tell us can be funded by grow and, and what percentage. I, I really don't see us getting to this level, it being worth it. The, the percentages we've seen so far are in the range of 30% of what they would fund. But that's, that's kind of, this is kind of where we're at right now. And we need to, you know, move forward with these negotiations with Alka San and really, you know, determine is any of this extra work, you know, cost effective for us. There's, there's no action we need from you guys today. We wanted to get these costs in front of you, just, you know, keep you on the same page where we're at. There's going to be updates moving forward as we have these talks with Alka San. Trying to think what else I wanted to mention out.
Yeah, let me, Jake, let me jump in for a second while you, while your sleep starved brain, how's that baby doing, by the way? You sleeping in there?
Yeah.
Good, good. The, uh, what we wanted to do was basically let you know that we've been talking about regionalization for a very long time. It's been on, it's been off, it's been on, it's been off, it's back on again. And it now appears as though we may actually have some sort of understanding where we're headed, what Alka San wants to see. And based on this, what our anticipated costs to regionalize could be. You know, we're still looking at, and, and, you know, this is all just based on preliminary discussions, but we're still looking at handing over the keys to this stuff, so to speak, in say, 2024, 2025. And please Drew or Jason, if that's changed, let me know. But that's kind of where my calculus puts us. So this isn't tomorrow, but it's something we need to plan, start planning for, like it will be tomorrow. You know, I, there is, um, there is a possibility of funding for this, as Jake alluded to. Basically, you know, Alka San wants to see communities tackle I and I infiltration, groundwater infiltration is what, is how they rank your grow funding application. So if you, if, in theory, if you spend more, you get more. But that's also not necessarily always the case, and it doesn't always justify spending more money, especially if you don't have it. So, you know, what, what we wanted to accomplish with this tonight was to basically put this on your radar, let you know that, you know, these are the kinds of figures that we're dealing with here. And then also know that, you know, as we continue to through, through, you know, our work with Three Rivers Wet Weather and their various subcommittees, and also just our dealings with Alka San in general. You know, the council is aware of this. You know, if, if, if by some stretch of the imagination, it sound, you know, I, I start to read or hear directly that you guys are all in favor of handing over the most spectacular sewer system ever created. And, you know, option three it is, then by all means let me know. But I think, you know, my plan, Jason's plan, Jake's plan, Drew's plan and Tim's plan is going to be to move forward with a cost effective strategy encompassed in options one and possibly two, based on, you know, what Alka San is willing to fund through grow. If we, it, especially if we can demonstrate to them that either option one or like an option one with a little bit of two contributes to flow reduction, and therefore we could be eligible and would receive grow funding. That's the direction that we should take. So, and, and we've now talked for a long period of time. I should ask you all, if any of you have any questions or just need to understand, have, have, you know, need a refresher or asking what this is all about. So please, by all means, you know, if, if that's the case, open up your mics and. Okay.
This is Tim again. A, a, as I look at the present transfer agreement that the solicitors group has been working on, my greatest concern is the future cost of maintaining these lines. And you know, I, it, it may be better, I'm not saying it is. I, I, I obviously need to defer to the engineers and, and, and the powers that be. I, I am certainly not a sewer engineer. It may be better that we spend the money to put these lines in good shape before they get transferred. Because as that, as that transfer agreement presently reads, we're going to be responsible for future repairs and maintenance of these lines for what, Rob, 12 years?
Yes, Tim, that's an excellent point, and thank you for bringing that up.
So, you know, we, we really need to look at it from that point of view. If, if we know that we have to spend a million and a half, $2 million, whatever it is, the, the, the problem is that we're, it's not a situation where we're spending all this money to get the lines in, in, in good order before they get transferred and then we're done. That's not the case at all. So we, we have an ongoing obligation and which lasts for 12 years. And, and a lot of things could happen in, in 12 years. And, and that part of it is a blank check. And I'm always concerned when my clients are in a position where they conceivably have to write a blank check to somebody else to do some work for them. And, you know, we have no control over how the work gets done or who's doing the work or, or any, anything else. And, and, you know, it's not that I don't trust Alka San and other people. You have to, or, or nothing works. But, you know, my, my point is simply when we, when we view this whole situation and, and the whole situation with the transfer of lines, we have to look at it from the point of view of, of our ongoing maintenance and repair responsibilities for a period of 12 years and, and what that could mean. So I, I don't necessarily think that we want to do the cheapest alternative. We want to do the best alternative, which, you know, which would, which would hopefully avoid future repairs and maintenance to the greatest extent possible. Again, I think that's the biggest issue.
Yeah, that, that's a great point, Tim. Uh, that's some, certainly something that needs to be considered. And if you spend the money now on those repairs, you're getting grant funding for, you know, portion of it later on, when you have to make the repairs, that's not going to be the case. But yeah, that's, that's a blank bar as well.
Just to play devil's advocate. Now, this is to the point where it's optional. It's not, you know, necessary. What? Looking at the costs in the next 12 years for us, even down the line, let's say another 20 years, is this going to pay for itself?
Well, I mean, that, that certainly is going to be part of an evaluation. It's.
I think George is the best way to answer that. And I knew if I, if, if I could count on anybody to play devil's advocate, it would be you. That's, that's, that, that's a very difficult question to answer. Because yes, we do have, even though we made the repairs, we, you know, we do have an ongoing maintenance obligation for these lines after the transfer agreement is signed. I think, you know, the easiest, my easiest rebuttal is, look, we spend, and this doesn't even include engineering and my cost of Robinson. I'm going to say I paid solely construction $80,000 to do, to fix the one broken segment of pipe in Nine Mile Run two years ago. So let's say, let's call it a nice even hundred grand. That fixed one defect in that line. So if you have to do that, you know, 15, 20, 30 more times. And there is a possibility of zero grant funding from Alka San or, you know, a, a Penn Vest, you know, a small water program or any other, any other possible funding source. I think at some point, yeah, you're eventually, those curves are going to cross and not regionalizing is going to, is going to hurt. But you're right, it is without the crystal ball, George, it's kind of tricky.
Well, I can tell you, I've been listening to this for a while and it, it just gets less attractive every time I hear it. I didn't know about the 12 year that we're still responsible for these lines. I kind of thought the entire point of regionalizing was we wouldn't have to worry about paying for this stuff after we transferred it over. In case something horrible happens.
Yeah, unfortunately, that was, that was the issue, that was, that has been the sticking point for the last, that and several other, several other items. But that was, I'm just looking over my notes here. You know, there was, there have been discussions from 18 years to, to no years to six years. And it sounds like the Alka, that the Alka San, the regulators and the municipal solicitors were finally able to get this thing across the finish line with that 12 year term. Yes, it is, it is unfortunate that even though you've handed in, you know, the keys to your car, you're still responsible for oil changes for the next 12 years. Which I think does, you know, as much as that stings financially, at some point, you know, you're no longer financially responsible for these things. But it lends some, you know, additional credence to what Mr. Berry said about perhaps the, you know, the, the cheapest option is not the best option. You, you could, you could roll the dice, you, you could be fine for 12 years. But I, I, I can assure you that there would be another, in 12 years' time, you will have another incursion into Nine Mile Run or, you know, some other interceptor, even after we've signed the agreement.
Well, I think, I mean, generally in the very long term, which is, you know, how we've been trying to think on this council for the last 10 years, it's probably the best play. I like the ability to get as much grant funding for this stuff as possible. And I guess according to the engineers, uh, that means making, doing this now and not later. Does that mean, is there the opportunity to go in with, are there income restrictions? Is it better to go in with, together with Braddock Hills and then apply jointly for the program?
So Alka San through Three Rivers Wet Weather has been pushing the M47 communities, which is us, Swissville, Wilkinsburg, Churchill, Braddock Hills. I'm leaving anybody out there, Jake, City of Pittsburgh. To do a multi municipal project. We, I, I have my own reservations about that in that there's a lot of stuff upstream of us that needs to be fixed. So why is, i- i- it's really difficult for Edgewood just to jump in front of that speeding bus? Because if all the multi municipal projects that we do don't abate the Canaan Geyser, what did we do, what did we accomplish at the end of the day? The Canaan Geyser, meaning the CSO that occurs every time it rains upstream. If, 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 if that abatement can somehow be accomplished and guaranteed, and I, you know, there are a number of mechanisms by which it could occur, then I think it makes sense for Edgewood to stick its hand up and say, sure, we'll consider taking the lead on a multi municipal source flow reduction project to include all of the repairs that we just mentioned. Those negotiations that are literally ongoing with Three Rivers Wet Weather to the various other governments that I mentioned. If that is not something, if that doesn't sound like something that is palatable to the other aforementioned communities, then I think it's our engineer's advice, in, in my opinion, that we're going to go this alone. And we're going to focus on our pipes with the intention of negotiating through Alka San, the ability to do what we're calling the amputation, which is jettison that portion of line in Frick Park. And that's, that is going to require some serious negotiation on our parts with Al Qasian, for sure. There's a lot of things that have to fall into place for that to happen. Namely, Al Qasian lets PWSA go first, and then we jump in, so we're not negotiating with PWSA. That's, that's the message that has been sent through Three Rivers Wet Weather to the various powers that be. We have another call on, I believe it's this Thursday or next Thursday, to discuss that. Again, this could take quite a bit of time. I, it's difficult, John, I'm not going to lie. I mean, this is, this is not, this is not an easy sale by any stretch of the imagination. I don't want to belabor this point, but...
Right, just to move things along, I guess, just to kind of wrap it up. What's the next thing that we need to do as council? When do we, as a council, need to make a decision on something?
I think, and Jake, I'm going to defer to you here, but I'm going to listen to what I say, and Drew even, because he was the one who made the suggestion. We expand our scope of work for this upcoming fall project to do work over here at the School for the Deaf, to also include CCTV work on the segments of questionable pipe down in Frick Park.
Correct, and that's to expand our, what we know about those sewers for the areas that Al Qasian didn't get to, be it role of, they hit a root ball, they stopped, they didn't look for manholes type thing.
Yeah. So, is that something, and it would be, you know, and I'm sure, you know, Drew and Jake, you guys could work up an OPC of what, you know, based on the footage and time spent, that could cost?
Yes.
Okay. Council, would you like me to pursue an estimation of cost to expand our scope of work beyond what we budgeted to do CCTV work on the trunk sewer in Frick Park and the other sections that we couldn't get through?
I think that's a necessity. It's got to be done sooner or later, so we might as well take care of it now.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we're doing, that's not, you're not doing extra work on the line that we made cut off?
Yeah, we would be doing extra work. Because we have, Tara, we have absolutely no guarantee that we can cut that off. We need to operate on the assumption that we can't amputate. And frankly, too, well, I'm not even going to go down that road, but yeah, a look inside that pipe would be beneficial.
All right, well, I mean, from my perspective, we need to bite the bullet and do what needs to be done, and not pass those costs on, and, you know, not hope that everything's fine. This is, I guess, this was coming, so we need to suck it up.
I can let you all know that there is some brave hope on this, and that, you know, when we were down there two years ago, looking for our break and trying to find manholes, we now have a very good survey-based understanding of where everything is down there, assuming the stream hasn't moved. We, it won't be, you know, a seven-day seek-and-destroy mission to try to locate manholes. We know where they are, they've been identified, we've been in a lot of them. So, that should, you know, control our costs a little bit. You know, we're not going to be having another survey team back down there for days looking for manholes.
All right, let's give the engineers some instructions. Is there anyone opposed to do what we have to do with respect to the cammering the...
Sounds necessary.
All this stuff sounds like stuff we're going to have to do eventually. All right, so, Rob, those are your engineers, you have your counsel on that. I mean, I guess, are there any other questions for Jake and Drew?
I just have one question. When, if you were going to combine these lines, and we were going to like tap into this, the PWSA line, I mean, there's so, nobody's mentioned any concern about like twice as much stuff having to go through just one line. Any concern there, or?
That's been evaluated, I believe, and I think there's capacity in that line to make that happen.
Yeah, we wouldn't be talking about this, because, yeah, Tara, you're actually talking about putting 10 pounds into a five-pound bag, so to speak. But yeah, that was an option years ago, because we did the flow monitoring, to determine that there is spare capacity in that line. And also, there'll be more capacity if we eliminate all this extraneous inflow.
All right, any other questions? Others, I'd like to move ahead with the agenda.
Thank you for having us this evening.
All right, thanks. Jake and Drew, thank you very much for the presentation. That was very informative. Please keep us updated as you guys move along.
Thanks, guys, I really appreciate it.
All right, we'll move ahead with approval of minutes. In your packets, you received minutes for the March 15th council meeting, the March 22nd special council meeting, and the April 5th council meeting. Does anybody have any revisions or additions to any of those minutes? Hearing none, Mr. O'Donnell.
I move to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Mr. O'Donnell?
I move to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2021, special meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Mr. O'Donnell?
I move to approve the minutes of April 5th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second. Not somebody that...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Authorization to pay bills, Mr. O'Donnell?
I move to authorize the payments of bills for goods and services received by the borough, having been reviewed and approved by the General Government Committee from the General Fund in the amount of $118,422.99, and from the Sewer Fund in the amount of $21,085.87, for a total of $139,508.86. Would you like me to put in some, Mr. President, would you like me to throw some notes in?
You can do it now, or at your report, it's up to you.
I'll do it now, and maybe that will suffice for my report. Big, okay, big numbers this time, guys, was $21,083 to, or sorry, $21,083 to Leonard Smith and Solair for the presentation we just heard. We have a $30,598 check from the General Fund for a 2021 F-350 DPW pickup truck, which we're expecting next week, and two big payments that were made online for April, April insurance and May insurance, $21,099 each. So, that's why you're seeing some big numbers this time.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. That'll be, that's also your report. Police report, Mayor Wilson.
Could we vote on that?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I always do that. Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba. Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yanni.
Okay, buddy, okay.
And Mr. Wainwright.
Hi, and the motion passes. All right, we'll move into committee reports. Mr. O'Donnell has given his report. Mayor Wilson, police report.
Nothing to report, except for the vehicles are all running pretty good, and we've been safe and lucky, so nothing over to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public safety, Mr. Fuller.
Public safety did not meet.
All right. Community developments, just as an FYI, I'm going to have Ms. Gleba take over Jack Wright's committee assignments for the remainder of his term. I think it's just easier that way. I don't think there have been any meetings since she's been chair.
We have, we have not met, Mr. President.
We have not, okay, no one. Public works, Mr. Love.
Public works did not meet.
Community services, Ms. Yanni.
Community services did not meet.
Okay, personnel, Dr. Patrol.
Personnel did not meet.
And pension, Mr. Fuller.
Pension committee did not meet.
Okay, Mr. Zohorcheck, did Connect do anything with any note?
Connect has not done anything particular of note. That's terrible for me to say, I apologize. No, they have, several subcommittees are exploring new strategies for both a climate action plan for communities to potentially adopt, still kicking various ideas around with waste and recycling measures. And I do believe we're due for an executive committee meeting, but I am actually remiss in when that will be, I apologize. Ms. Yanni, do you have anything to add about Connect? Because you seem to be more in tune with what Connect does on a daily basis than I do.
No, nothing.
Okay.
Okay, move on to the Borough Solicitor Report. Mr. Berry, do you have a report?
No. I just want to tell you very briefly, we were contacted by the environmental consultant who's working with WABCO on the parcel D remediate, environmental remediation. And Mr. Zohorcheck and I spoke with her, and she called us, she contacted us because she was concerned that we had rezoned parcel D, and we explained all that to her. And, you know, I think everything's fine, I don't think we need to be concerned about it. But, you know, she was concerned because WABCO was planning on, again, remediating the property for non-residential standards. And that's, and, but the conversation was very amicable and very informative. Rob, did you have a chance to talk with her?
I did, Tim, I spoke with her just after, shortly after you and I did. I second everything that Tim just stated. You know, WABCO, WABCO has never even set foot on this property, that they acquired it through the dissolution of Union Switch and Signal. And as Tim stated, their intent was to remediate the non-residential standards, but with the development of us, you know, rezoning parcel D for the future possibility of the Rodriguez development occurring, obviously, now when they do their report, you know, they're going to have to include a number of residential remediation recommendations. That doesn't necessarily mean that the property will be remediated to residential standards. It will just mean, as we, you know, as you've probably heard a number of times, there'll be a number of covenants or deed restrictions attached to that property, which will be the end result of this, this report. And those, you know, that would make any future developer aware, which it certainly isn't any secret that AM Rodriguez is aware, and, you know, is fully intending to purchase the property even with the known contaminants on site, and in fact, make those remediation levels to residential standards. So, no, the conversation, like, Tim, yeah, Tim summarized it very nicely. She, you know, said she would obviously keep us informed of any, any future details that might occur. She'd appreciate the same if we, if we made any changes, but no, otherwise. You know, she was understanding of the change in zoning, and we'll just now, they'll have to add a few more footnotes to their report about making sure that, you know, any future residential development that occurs on that site, be aware of the environmental covenants that'll forever carry with that, that piece of property.
Okay, my point was just to make sure the council was aware that that was still an issue. And again, I don't think we need to be concerned, more concerned about it at this point. I have nothing else to report, Mr. President.
Okay, will there be any need for an executive session?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Borough manager report, Mrs. Zohorcheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things to talk briefly about tonight. Thank you all for your patience in viewing the engineers' sewer presentation. A quick note, Ryan already mentioned, the Public Works' new pickup truck is inbound to us on Wednesday. That truck is actually arriving ahead of the new police car that we ordered, which is wonderful. So, next meeting, I'll be seeking a motion, next meeting or the following meeting, I'll be seeking a motion to sell the old vehicle along with some other equipment that we have. There's also, we finally have completed everything that we need to do in order to get a final inspection of the traffic signal at Maple Avenue. That final inspection is scheduled with our PennDOT representative for this Thursday at 9:00 a.m. Assuming all goes well, we'll be able to submit for reimbursement for that project and finally put that thing behind us. I had a pre-construction meeting this morning with our geotechnical engineer and representatives of JG Construction. That's the contractor that will be performing the reconstruction of the retaining wall segments in the Opium Avenue Borough parking lot. That project is tentatively scheduled to start on May 3rd. It should last, they have, under the contract, they have 90 days, which puts the final date of completion at Saturday, July 10th. Engineer, I'm sorry, the contractor is confident that they could be in and out probably no later than the third week of June. So, notification to drivers who use that parking lot is going to go out this week. Unfortunately, those drivers will be displaced throughout the duration of that project. I'm going to offer them free on-street parking passes for their inconvenience. I'm sorry, but we can't remediate the parking lot without moving the cars out. It's just sort of like getting new carpet in your house, the old stuff has to come out. But the contractor is well aware of that. There are severe penalties for going beyond day 90 in the contract, and both the engineer and contractor are very confident that they complete this project in the timeline allotted. So, just wanted to make you all aware of that. That will be commencing on May 3rd. Let's see, also in project land, not at the Borough's doing, but on the Port Authority's doing, something that will impact the Borough. Faciano has been, Michael Faciano Company has been contracted by the Port Authority to replace the ailing fence and wall structure on Swissvale Avenue that adorns the East Busway. That project is going to start also at the very beginning of May. And unfortunately, they need to, Faciano needs to block off some parking on Swissvale Avenue, approximately 200 feet at a time to accommodate their equipment and materials on site. They're going to start at the train station and work towards Swissvale. Their foreman, who I also met with today, expects that project to last probably until about July 4th. So, there'll be two sort of back-to-back projects running at the same time. But that's, the fences and dire need of replacement, and I'm happy that it's being done. Also, on tonight's agenda, there is a motion to exercise the second option year of the Shaqog salt contract. I recommend that we proceed with that execution and exercising that option. Right now, our price per ton is about $80.25. In the option years, the supplier has only the ability to increase the price based on the cost of diesel fuel, which is tied to the Consumer Price Index, so there are no other surprise cost increases in there. So, we should be entering the second year, which actually starts July 1, at the same price we are at right now, which is $80.25. That cost will prevail until June 30th of 2022, barring any, obviously, price increases based on the CPI. And then lastly, for you tonight, I included in your packets, you'll see a breakdown of costs, the engineers' estimated cost to do... you'll see a breakdown of costs, the engineer's estimated cost to do this year's paving program focusing on a brick replacement for Pliny Way versus an asphalt reconstruction of the street. You'll note the, I would say, incredible price difference in the two reconstruction options. The brick reconstruction being nearly double the cost of doing a removal and asphalt reconstruction. Also on that, you'll notice that, you know, as always, I've exercised the option to do add alternates. The engineers, when they build these estimates, take an average of the bid prices that they've seen year-to-date. So these figures represent an average cost given or, you know, gotten by all of their clients to date. So it's expected that we should experience relatively the same price. If you were to choose a asphalt reconstruction for Pliny Way, you could, in theory, pave all of the streets in the bid and both of the add alternates, which includes all of Gordon and the remainder of Penwood up to the Wilkinsburg line. If you were to go with a brick replacement, you couldn't pave any of those. You would do the base bid only. And that's assuming that we get exactly what that price for brick reconstruction is stated by the engineer. That's, that's my input to you all on what, what say, what say you all in moving forward with either a brick reconstruction or asphalt reconstruction for Pliny Way?
Well, as I think I expressed last week, this is an alleyway. Pliny Way is, which one is, is, that's the one?
It's parallel South Braddock Avenue.
Okay, so let's go behind the Thai Place and all right, well, I don't think anyone bought their house because that alleyway was brick. I'd like to get the whole alleyway done. You know, that alleyway's been in rough shape for a while.
Need doing?
Oh, yeah. They're, they're in bad shape. The, the section of Pliny between Saunders and Wes Hutchinson actually moves when you drive a heavy vehicle over it?
Yeah, I would agree with John that, you know, it's, if, if we had all the money in the world, it'd be nice to go back to brick, but we don't, so we won't.
Yeah, I talked to Let's Go and the next-door neighbors there. I talked to two neighbors in the street. They don't care. They just want it fixed.
So then, what I'm gonna do is I am going to, because the last time, if you recall, I had spoken to you about, oh my gosh, I just, at the top of Walnut, I just completely forgot the name of the street. If it said, that's another brick street. I'm gonna survey some of those homeowners because those are actual homes that front that street. That street is in dire need of repair as well, and it is an all-brick street. And the engineer's estimate of doing that is well over half of our entire road budget. So that's a decision I feel that perhaps the Public Works Committee should evaluate before we move forward, but we're gonna save that one for next year, if anyone, if, 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 if we're all comfortable with that one. But it sounds like I'm gonna move forward with a brick reconstruction of Pliny Way and we're gonna aim to do all of the streets, including the add alternates, depending upon what our bid comes back at.
Right, we're doing
Asphalt Pliny Way, asphalt Pliny Way, right?
I'm sorry, asphalt, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sorry.
So what is, what is $400 and some odd thousand dollars get us this year as far as asphalt?
That gets us. Let me pull it up. I'm sorry here.
Guess, does that get us both alternates?
It does, yes. I'm sorry. And of course, my computer is deciding to have a moment right at this exact time. But yes, it would include, assuming we get favorable pricing, I'm, I'm ambitiously thinking that we can do all of Gordon from West Moreland to Swissvale. We can do the remainder of Penwood.
Mayor's House.
Which, in front of the mayor's house, we finally got it. We can do Pliny Way end-to-end, so from Saunders to the Wilkinsburg border. We can do, there's this little segment of McKay Street, which is the alleyway off of Race. About 265 feet long. It's literally crumbling. We can do all of Greendale from where the concrete street stops to Race Street. So just past the Parkway off-ramp to Race. We can do Boyd, which is the little alleyway across from the entrance to Caning Field. And I'm also looking at improving the, like, the concrete step landing area and doing some curbing in there to eliminate some tripping issues. And then a, a, a re, resurface slash a little bit of reconstruction of the intersection at Maple Avenue and Edgewood Avenue, where we just installed a new traffic light to address some drainage. That section, that intersection, has actually not been paved in probably 20 years. We have paved up to the ends of all of the streets, but we left out the center. For whatever reason, we've paved Edgewood Avenue, Swissvale Avenue and Maple Avenue, but no one ever carried it through the intersection. Mainly because that intersection's very large. But with the new ADA ramps, I felt it's time to address the quality of pavement in that intersection and also try to address some of the, the intersectionality between how those streets run into one another, because a lot of people scrape on that street. So let's add that one on there and adjust it while we have that brand-new intersection to work with. And then we want to go back there for quite a while.
I think we're ready for the new light.
Yeah. That was the plan. And that includes, obviously, anywhere we come across old, non-compliant ADA ramps. We bring them up to current ADA standard, effective warning surface, new curbing if necessary, checking the grade on all of them to make sure they're 8.33 and also, you know, at least 36 inches wide, if not 48. So that's the paving program in a nutshell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zohorcheck.
Any, any questions about that?
Hearing none. Does anyone have any new business? Hearing none. We'll move on to committee action.
I have a quick question. Rob, this is Jack.
Hey, Jack.
Per Cafe, their new, their new deli's opening up and their tables are out. I just want to make sure everyone's okay with that and if they don't need to do anything, which should be all right then, right?
I have started receiving back our applications for a, for sidewalk cafes, for sidewalk cafe seating. I will follow up with our code enforcement officer. I know that he hand-delivered applications to all of the establishments that are subject to sidewalk cafe ordinance. That was several weeks ago. I will make sure
As long as we're treating everyone the same and fair, that's all.
I will follow up with him, absolutely. I actually received all boroughs in the mail today, so they're starting to come back.
Okay, great. I guess there was no new business. We'll move on to committee action. No names next to these, so I'm just gonna pick you at random. Rock Salt, second year. The motion to exercise, Mr. Love.
I move to exercise the second option year of the Shaykog Purchasing Alliance Salt Contract with Cargill, Inc., commencing July 1, 2021 and ending on June 30th, 2022.
Second. I thought I heard a second before the
This is Zohorcheck. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba.
Yeah.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yanni.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright. Hi, and the motion passes. Motion to accept Stephanie Olmer's letter of resignation. Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept Stephanie Olmer's letter of resignation from the Shade Tree Committee, effective May 1, 2021.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yanni.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright. Hi, and the motion passes. Motion to advertise 2021 road paving program bid, Mr. Love.
I move to authorize the borough engineer to advertise the 2021 road paving program bid.
Second.
This is Zohorcheck. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yanni.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright. Hi, and the motion passes. Motion to advertise ordinance 1072, Mr. O'Donnell.
Mr. President, we should actually do a first reading of that first. I'm sorry.
I was wondering where that was.
Yeah, it's, it's right after, on committee action, I'm sorry, it's right after motion to advertise the road paving bid and a first reading.
Okay, I'm looking at an old, I'm just, I'm looking at the old, at the old agenda. We can do this by, you know, we can do this by title only. First reading by, first reading by title only, Mr. O'Donnell.
Borough of Edgewood, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, ordinance 1072. An ordinance of the Borough of Edgewood County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, providing for the penalties related to the possession or use of a small amount of marijuana, personal use of marijuana, and the personal possession of marijuana paraphernalia.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Zohorcheck, well, before we, I think we're all, I think we've beat this dead horse. We all know what we're talking about.
I actually, since I'm kind of new to this, I, I was talking to Mr. Berry to kind of clarify just a few things about it, and I have two questions that may have already been answered in the past, but so my take on reading over it is that this just kind of reiterates state law. Is that accurate or no?
If I may, yes, that's correct, Mrs. Gleba. It also adds guidance as to a lesser punishment that officers may choose to exercise in the event of an encounter with a person who is either using or in possession of marijuana, small amounts. So you got the state law that goes up to the, I'm sorry, that goes up to a misdemeanor and I believe says a penalty of no higher than $500 shall be assessed. What we're doing is giving, through this ordinance, our local officers the, the option of taking a smaller, less less severe penalty that would not include a misdemeanor and is outlined in section 3 of the release. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so basically, what it accomplishes is it gives our, our local officers the right to change what, what the penalty would be, but then that's actually determined by, by the court. Isn't, is that accurate or no? Like? Or how does that?
As to the last piece of the court, I can't say. What was the first piece again? It's, you were saying it gives our police, the idea is to give them options, more flexibility in terms of which route to pursue and what the charges they would press are.
Because I was, I guess I thought that we, state law is, is, you know, that's the, that law takes precedent over local.
It does, and our ordinance is written to fit within the framework of existing state law.
Okay. All right.
At least that is my contention, and we're still gonna be voting.
Right, and it makes no mention of, of medical marijuana or anything like that. This is strictly non, non-medical marijuana usage or possession.
Correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, then, do we have a second? Yeah, we had George.
Yeah, George seconded.
All right, then, Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba.
No.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Ms. Yanni.
Hi.
Mr. Wainwright. No, and the motion passes anyway. Now, is the next thing, is the advertise?
Yes.
The one, the copy I got of the proposal still had 18 written on it. And that was the, what the chief, or the chief says, absolutely not.
No, I talked to the chief about that. That was not the conclusion that he and I came to.
18? So people can buy cigarettes?
Go ahead. So, just to briefly run over that, yes, the law does apply to individuals who are age 18 and up. The reason for that is because an individual who can gain a medical marijuana card in the state of Pennsylvania has to be, or could be, age 18 or up. As to the argument about tobacco and alcohol, those two items are regulated under recreational laws, and we're not talking about recreational usage of anything. What we're attempting to do here is limit the penalties for individuals who are found in possession of marijuana if they are above the age of 18. So these laws only apply to adults. They don't apply to kids. And it's, again, the idea is to give our police officers discretion in terms of choosing how severe the charges they would press against an adult at par.
But it is recreational. Let's not kid ourselves. It is recreational dope. It's not medical. This is for recreational also. Our excuse doesn't matter. It's still gonna be not taxed dope. Am I right?
Yes.
Well, I have a problem with the 18. I think it's ridiculous. I thought we talked about that last meeting to bump it to 21, but what you're doing is you're taking tools away from the parents about their kids, saying, well, it's legal. I can have it. And I just think it's a terrible setup for later on when you have kids. I've been through it.
18-year-olds are adults.
I'm sorry?
18-year-olds are adults.
Yeah, but there are a lot of 18-year-olds. Just wait for your kids to grow up. I just disagree with it totally.
I guess that would have been maybe a little more useful before we voted on it, but we still have a second and third to go through. Bring up those points again. I guess in the two, two weeks from now, the next meeting, when does that happen, Rob?
Yes, so assuming, you know, the motion
Be advertised for a sufficient amount of time.
Yeah, i- if there's a positive or an affirmative vote next to advertise the ordinance, then I would move to do that. Now, the Pittsburgh Post Gazette's only, only allows you to advertise on Fridays and Sundays. Assuming I can get at the paper for Friday, we could conceivably have a second and final vote on this on May 3rd. But if Friday's list is full, because I'm not paying to advertise on Sundays where it's three times as much, we'd have to wait till the 30th, which means you'd have your, your next reading on May 17th.
All right, so about a month, maybe a month from now.
Maybe a month at most, best case scenario is, as we always do, which would be the next meeting of May 3rd.
All right. Then I need a motion to advertise the ordinance, Mr. O'Donnell.
I move to, sorry, make a big language in front of me. I'm sorry, I move to advertise ordinance 1072.
Mr. Zohorcheck, please call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleba.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Dr. Patrol.
Hi.
Mrs. Janey.
Hi.
And Mr. Wainwright.
No, and the motion passes. All right, that was the last thing I had on my agenda.
That is correct.
Then oh, I see it up there. Okay, then, Mr. Fuller, do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed? No, then meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President.